virtually so I'll chair the meeting tonight and Ms. Peck please start with the roll call.
Jim Boucher.
Here.
John Creacher. Pat McKee. Cody Nicolai. Jennifer Paoli. Corey Sillers.
Here.
Lance Stroh.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning achievement and success. I have a proclamation to read for school bus driver appreciation. Whereas more than 12,000 school bus drivers in the state of Wisconsin travel more than 144,000 miles a year to safely transport hundreds of thousands of students to and from school every day. And whereas drivers, managers, and operators of school buses practice and promote the highest standards to guarantee the protection of their passengers. And whereas in addition to transporting students to and from school, drivers are tasked with important responsibilities of vehicle maintenance and cleanliness, keeping bus order, assisting students with specialized needs, and ensuring student safety. And whereas the Wisconsin School Bus Association through its Board of Directors pledges its full and dedicated cooperation with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's Bureau of Transportation Safety, Division of Motor Vehicles, and State Patrol, as well as the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, schools, law enforcement agencies, parent-teacher associations, CISA's, and other organizations across the state in promoting public awareness of the importance of school bus transportation. And whereas this week, the state of Wisconsin joins all Wisconsinites in thanking school bus drivers, managers, and operators across the state for the critically important work they do to ensure Wisconsin students have a safe and reliable way to get to and from school every day. Now therefore, I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim February 12th through 16th, 2024, as Wisconsin School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Thank you to our bus drivers. Next, we have public and student comment. Please come forward. Dana Parlier, just went tonight. You know the routine, so I'll skip the intro for you. There you go.
Too much technology today. Dana Parlier, Marathon, Wisconsin. I am the WA president. Just doing our monthly update. First things first, I just want to share that we are continuing monthly meetings with Longfellow team to talk about the things that our teachers bring up and that we are wanting to continue that as that search for our new superintendent happens and to be part of that process. And then finally, well, actually, there's two things. In January, right after the semester ended, we held a social for our teachers just to debrief, enjoy each other's company at Whitewater Music Hall. And then again, at Whitewater Music Hall on March 13th, we are holding a meet and greet with the individuals that are running for school board. So from 4:30 to 6:30 on March 13th, and it's open to the public. So hopefully we'll have some people besides teachers there to talk to our candidates. So that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, which may include appointments, separations, leaves of absence, retirements, does include the minutes of the regular session of January 8th, 2024, and special session of January 22nd, 2024, payment of bills, budget status and investment report, donations to the district from Matt Brewer, Margaret Marcus, American Online Giving Foundation, Forest Park Neighborhood, QuickTrip, and Wausau Coated Products. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude to the donations.
Second?
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a possible action item, which is a petition to alter district boundaries. I would ask that Mr. and Mrs. Brickner, please come forward. And then if you hit the microphone there, it'll change from red to green. Go ahead.
Um, so a little background, my two girls are currently enrolled at St. Mary's in Marathon. So they are not open enrolled in the Marathon School District. The reason I'm petitioning for this is because Marathon, not this next year, but in the coming years, my oldest daughter's going to be a freshman next year. My youngest daughter is going to be in sixth grade. They are closing open enrollment, and I'm concerned that my daughters, who've been going to in the Marathon School District since 4K, will not be able to attend. Marathon High School's always had unlimited open enrollment, but for next year, they're limiting it for the first time to nine students. There's only four applicants from St. Mary's that would have to open enroll, so I feel pretty confident there. But this soon-to-be sixth grade class has 60 students, and they've closed all open enrollment except for three 4K spots at the elementary school. So of course, I don't want to separate my girls, and I don't want them to not have to go where they have always gone. I noticed that they sent a fiscal impact, and I actually have a question on that if somebody can clarify. Because my girls are not open enrolled, is their student fee paid to Wausau right now? Sorry.
Yeah. Did you want to answer that, Josh? You want me to? Sure. So the fiscal impact is the property taxes that are collected on your property. If the property leaves, we still have our same expenses. So now we have to take that amount and disperse it amongst the other residents.
Okay, understood.
Yeah. You have more? Yes.
I think your question is specific to the open enrollment piece.
Right.
So if you're not currently open enrolled, then we would not be paying.
Right.
Okay, so because we moved to this home in 2018. So from 2018 to this point, there's been no open enrollment fee paid, correct?
Correct. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
No, so I just wanted to clarify that, that there is a net impact, but that hasn't been paid up to this point either. If you look on the map, we are a cow pasture away from the school district. There's no homes between, to the west of us that have any students. In fact, there's no, there's one home period in that whole district, and it's a hunting cabin. And to the north is the owner of that pasture. So we're not, the Marathon School Bus actually turns around on my road. We're not well outside the area. Just going this route, so I don't have to throw other arrows in my quiver out there. I mean, I own property in the Marathon School District, and I can do things that way. But I'm just looking to find, lessen the emotional things that are happening with my daughter right now, finding out that she may not be able to attend school with her kids or with all her classmates that she's been with since 4K. So any other questions or clarifications?
I'd like to hear, Josh, you want to go through the presentation part that you got attached here too? And then we'll see. Do board members have any questions from Mr. Brickner?
I just have.
Over here from Josh.
Just one, and I guess probably more of a procedural thing. So if we say, yeah, this is fine, we completely understand, does Marathon?
Yep, they meet on Thursday, and they'd have to accept me.
So they have to do something in the affirmative as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Marathon, it happens a couple of times a year, usually more on the Edgar Stratford side. But that's the board president there, so actually called me and said, hey, this is what's happening. If you live close, do this.
Okay.
Well, let's get here. So just to touch on the open enrollment piece, that is given as an example based on the property. It's something that we've historically looked at when we've had these situations come in front of the board. So in an effort to be consistent, that was left on there. The other piece that I wanted to touch on is the property tax piece. So this would not change the district revenue limit. What this would do is move the portion of those taxes to the other taxpayers in the district.
Could you explain further how is it that students that are in our district boundaries are not open enrolling out? How are they going to a different school district?
Let me, let me verify. Since it's a private school and they're not enrolling to Marathon specifically, let me double check for you and get back to you. I don't want to misspeak on that.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, maybe now at a private school, but the Marathon High School is a public school.
Yes.
So wouldn't they then be open enrolling into the high school?
If you didn't change the property value, yes.
Exactly. Yes, if you didn't change the property boundary, then they would be enrolling into the high school. And that's where that impact comes in then, because it's not, it's not just the property tax. It's also then, we don't get that revenue limit for those students.
For those students, right? And what you're looking at is the impact of one student. So it's just standardized for one student. And it does the three-year rolling average. So in the first year, we'd still receive two-thirds essentially of the revenue for that student and one-third. And then after that, it would go to zero.
And the map that you have there is that, can you scroll to that map?
Go down to page two and three. There you go.
And where is the one that shows where the property itself is? So it's that, it's that blue area there?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any connecting part of that property to the Marathon School District, or would it create an island there?
It would create an island.
Any other questions from board members?
I don't have a question, but I just dealt with this at state level on the appeals board two weeks ago between just two districts down towards Milwaukee. And one of the considerations that we had to take into was is under the statute 117, whether the proposed reorganization will make any part of the school district's territory non-contiguous. And in that case, it was a no, because they were touching, the parcels were touching, but this is a yes. So according to what I just did two weeks ago, it's not encouraged to make islands.
Any other board member questions? I think whenever we have a situation like this, we're always met with sort of the conflict, which is, totally understand Mr. Brickner's position and what he's worried about, which hopefully won't happen, but it could versus representing the other 8,000 students in the district and however many tens of thousands of taxpayers. And so it's, it's difficult when you try to balance that. I think, just for me personally, I think, given that it's creating an island and just looking at the loss of funding, not only in the near future with students there, but forever, the end of time for any students that ever live at that property. I think the more, the more feasible population or boundary shift would be if we're making an exchange with a district, so that there's some sort of equal exchange where we're giving up one location, they're giving up one location, and the taxpayers kind of break even. I think it's pretty hard when it's a separate situation like this.
Just to clarify, Corey, the direction that you got was, it's not encouraged to create an island, which makes sense. Is it against law? Is it against any statutes to create?
The lawyer from DPI gave us as the appeals board, and that's, that was one of our considered creations. The other, excuse me, the rest of the list, all of the characteristics of the district, how fired is the school, educational needs by moving this, you know, parcels around. None of the other things are coming to effect, just this one where it becomes non-contiguous. And this is what the, I said, this is what the lawyer gave us, and it is within the 117 statute that she kept citing.
Okay, so of all the parameters that they laid out, this was the sole.
This would be the, yeah, this would be the only one of non-contiguous that. If it was touching the district, I mean, you guys had that before I was on the board a couple of years back. There was a piece that was touching, and he agreed to move it out, but it was touching.
We've had, we've had many that have been touching where we haven't agreed as well. And what I mentioned before is the main reason for it, because as hard as it is to say when you have a very reasonable request from one family here, where does that end? And how do you disregard the interest of all of the other taxpayers? Because it isn't just the $5,000 a year this year, it's the five, it's $5,000 for the rest of time, forever. And it isn't just the students that live here now, it's, there could be four students living there in 20 years. And that could be, you know, 40 grand a year. That's, that could be, you know, a staff member, basically, of funding that isn't there. And where does it end? Because if, you know, if you're on the border of our district and you say, well, you know, boy, pick a district, Athens has a lower tax rate, and I've got this really nice property, so I just want to move over. Like, if there isn't any exchange back at what, I mean, I just don't know how you justify it when we're, we represent the whole district. Yeah, I don't like having to take that position. It just feels like if we represent the whole district, I'm, that's kind of the position I have to take. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I don't disagree with what you said, Lance, but I always, it always boils down, right? We want to do what's best for children. I mean, that's what we see. And in this example, and I get not wanting to create an island, that makes sense. That's not advisable. But when I look at the rest of our borders on our district, I mean, a lot of them don't make sense. Not that, you know, we want to contribute to the confusion, but I'm just trying to see what is the likelihood, you know, 10, 20 years down the road, that this is going to have meaningful impact on, on us. And we have students right now who would be negatively impacted potentially if this goes, if this goes through.
And how many more? So we don't know if Marathon's going to close open enrollment. Maybe they will. It's surprising if they turn down that funding, but how many more do we have throughout the whole district that, that if we granted this, that could also apply to go to Athens or Marathon or DCI or Mozeney throughout our whole district? And they, they not only get their guaranteed spot, and we lose all that funding, their districts now would bust them. So they're going to be further encouraged to request to go to different districts. I just don't know where it ends. And that's why I said about the conflict, is I can see the issue with these students. But yet, if we lose, you know, 10 or whatever thousand dollars a year, that impacts all the other students that we have too. Now, if you divide it out, you can say, well, it's not that much, but that's real money.
Right. But I guess to your, your first point, though, if other students chose, I mean, there's nothing stopping people from petitioning that right now.
No, but there's nothing encouraging them to. But if we start granting islands and not having, not requiring an exchange with another district and saying just anyone for a lower tax base, or for avoiding open enrollment, or for getting busing, this board will just, they'll just approve you to go and watch our enrollment go down. I, I don't, I just don't think that's a trend that we want to start.
No, I understand that.
Mr. Brickner, you said you had a meeting with the, on Thursday, with Marathon coming up?
Found out about this at the last board meeting when they set the open enrollment number.
Okay, so there's going to be further discussion?
If this doesn't go through, what kind of ends that discussion?
Okay.
Unless I was to appeal it. So if this doesn't go through, I apply for open enrollment. And with my younger daughter, on the third Friday count, try and, try and transfer her to the elementary school. We're doing, because it's so full.
Sure.
I believe that's what's called the third Friday count.
Right.
Any other questions from board members? So we don't have it listed with a motion. We have it listed as possible action. Do we?
Do we only take action if we are approving it, or do we take action either way to accept or object, or accept or deny?
Okay. Okay. Um, okay. I'm not, I'm not hearing a lot of support for, for granting it, so I'm going to phrase it this way first. But if it doesn't fail, we can, or doesn't pass, we can do it the other way. I'm seeking a motion to reject the petition to alter district boundaries. We have first and a second. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor of the motion to reject the petition, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, Mr. Brickner. Hopefully that open enrollment closure won't happen, and it won't end up being an issue for you. Yeah, I mean, in terms of the number, the space for the high school, hopefully you'll be able to get into there. Thank you. Up next, we have our demographer presentation.
While everybody's getting set up, I'd like to introduce Mark Roffers from MD Roffers LLC. He and I have had a few conversations, did some background work, and some made some requests for references, excellent reputation, has done a lot of work across the state, impeccable reputation. So we're, I'm glad he's here. Before Mark presents, ask Mr. Vigut to share a little, just kind of a, to set the starting point for our, our current elementary footprint.
Yeah, exactly. As a lead-in to the demographer discussion, wanted to talk about where we are in terms of elementary capacity right now. This information was shared with the board in June of 2022, so roughly 20 months ago. So just giving you an update to those numbers, some things we want to consider when we're looking at capacity in terms of what we've looked at before. We are talking about operational capacity, so that 90% number. And capacities of a school can vary a little bit depending on student need, where we are with student need. Class sizes, of course, vary between grades. You have a different number of kids in 4K than you have in fifth grade. We only have the 4K half-day in the Wausau School District. And then that we did take additional space needs into account, science rooms, music rooms, art rooms, things like that. Any questions on kind of those considerations before we look at the numbers very briefly? Okay, so everything in blue is K5 operational capacity numbers. And then we have that kind of salmon color for EC and 4K. And those numbers are capacity only, and that number is reflective of the half-day 4K. So just something to keep in mind. I did not do capacity numbers for 4K. It gets a little strange with partner sites and enrollment and things like that. So we have three to four 4K rooms in the four sites that have them, and then zero to two EC rooms. So that's something for you to think about. And then when we look at that K5 operational capacity, you'll see the capacity numbers there, the second Friday in January count. And then where we are in terms of being over or under capacity. So you can see that it ranges all the way from, you know, low 60s, 61, all the way up to 96 in terms of percentage of capacity. See, in total, we are 1,028 students under capacity as of that second Friday count. Just to give you a little context, the last time you looked at this in June of '22, that number was 1,024 students. So pretty much the same.
So if I'm looking at, just to make sure I understand it, if I look at GD Jones, for example, if we took 4K and really chatted out of there, not saying we are, but just for an example, I couldn't take that 134 and add it to the capacity, because that's, those are halftime students.
Exactly correct. Those are halftime students, and something considers that the number of students in a 4K room is less than.
Yeah. And then if I keep going to the right, and I see that Jones overall is 92 under, there are 92 students under the 90% capacity that we kind of have as our, I don't know, call it target goal. Because we don't ever have, we don't have 100% of her as our goal. You don't want to be that close, but we have 90% as our goal. So we're 92 students away from hitting our goal of 90%.
Yes, I would say that's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was reading it correctly. Thank you. Any other questions from board members on the updated enrollment and capacity figures before we move on? We can always come back to it if we need to. Okay. Great. Thanks for that intro.
I don't think so. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Roffers. Thanks, Keith, for the very nice introduction. I appreciate that. Impeccable. Feels like I should, you know, dress up nicer or something like that. But anyway, I do appreciate that and have talked with Keith and Josh and Cassie to a degree over the past couple of months to lead to this evening and to allow us to meet each other and, and for you to see what, you know, we could do for the district if you, if you so chose. So I believe this, this will work. Indeed, it does. Thank you. So who are we? As Josh suggested, we do our demographers, but we're also urban planners. That's my training and background. We have worked with school districts throughout the state and a couple beyond the state boundary. But we still do urban planning, and I have been working with the Village of Weston on a variety of projects and plans over the years. So I, I do travel along 39 quite a bit. At risk of you showing me the door, I'm from Madison. And that's, that's, that's where we are based. We're a small company. We've got three people working with us. We have done recent work with other districts that have similar issues to Wausau, Janesville, West Dallas. We're working diligently with Wauwatosa right now that is exploring consolidation. Davenport already has, West Dallas already has. I think you'll see we have a fairly innovative approach to projecting enrollment so that we have a good handle not only where we are now, what Josh just presented, but where we might be five years from now, 10 years from now, so that any decision wasn't made, you know, in a vacuum for the future and what the future might hold. And we also have a lot of experience in facilitating public planning processes for school districts and, and other agencies. And then there's this kind of cryptic word, and on facility planning, that is not influenced by the outcome. So I don't, I don't get paid if you build a school, have a referendum that succeeds, have a referendum that fails. My, I'm a fee-for-service kind of guy, and so I don't have any horse in the race as it comes to what outcome you might have in the district. And as I've already let you know, I'm not a district resident. So my kids are far away and won't be influenced by this, this decision. The way we put this together is a two-phase process. You have to figure out where you are and where you'd be if you didn't make any change before you can talk about what changes you might want to see for your district. So phase one features long-range enrollment projections. We envision that, and that typically takes about four months, and I'll explain the process in a moment. What you'll get out of that is projections by grade group school and even smaller area through the year 2040. So we'll be able to create a chart like Josh showed you for, for the future with our best estimate or projection for each of those schools, assuming no change in the district. Phase two, we have a suggestion that that might overlap a little bit with phase one. We could get started before we finish the projections. And that is actually working towards a new facilities plan for your district, basing it on a citizen-guided process, evaluating different options using a variety of small group and technical techniques and tools to make that happen so that that group could bring a recommendation to you as to how to move forward with your facilities. So phase one, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. And that's a little bit more certain as we kind of look into our crystal ball, what, what can happen or what will happen. We will, as I suggested, project how many students the district might expect within a timeframe that'll extend. within a timeframe that'll extend out to the year 2040. And at the start, we'll assume that there's no changes, that you're not adding schools, you're not subtracting schools, you're not doing anything to the, to the district. And, and that'll, the, the process will allow us to not only, you know, project enrollment for the district and the elementary level, but by school and by smaller area, so you, you and the people in this process can see what may happen from new housing development being proposed and possible so that, you know, we're not overlooking things that might happen in the future that could affect a particular elementary school where it might have a certain, you know, set of characteristics or enrollment today. We'll do that comparison then to existing building capacities as part of that process. How we do it, and you'll see a bunch of maps and graphics on, on these pages, none of these are of the Wausau School District. These are examples from other places that we put together to give you a feel for this. How we start is we divide your district into a group of neighborhoods, we estimate about 60, 75 different neighborhoods. They become the basis for all of our data collection, our analysis and our projections. We use the factors you see on the screen to determine a neighborhood boundary, we won't subdivide an existing elementary attendance area through those neighborhood boundaries, so we can come up with a projection that, that is summable to each of the elementary schools. Within each of the neighborhoods, we will project housing growth and development between now and the year 2040. We'll do that by using our background as urban planners, analyzing municipal development plans, understanding the market, looking at subdivision plats and apartment developments that are on the docket or drawing board at the city and elsewhere, talking with city planning staff, with developers in the community, with real estate pros to understand timing and likelihood of, of those types of developments. And then all, all of that, what we'll do is within, you know, let's just say 65 neighborhoods, we'll project the quantity, the rate, and the type of housing in, in each neighborhood. As you probably know, not all housing units are created equally for how many kids they'll generate. Broadly speaking, a new single-family house, house will generate, you know, many more kids on a fractional basis than an apartment unit will generate, so we'll factor all that into the, to the mix. This map just so happens to be of the West Dallas District, the previous one was Janesville, but this map shows in that particular district where with the hotter colors were the new housing development, you know, is occurring. And for that district and for many urban areas, you know, the market for apartments is super hot. And so that was really what, what was happening in that district.
Excuse me, Mark, just one clarifying question.
Sure.
So your definition of a neighborhood is a smaller geographic area than what we would consider today? I think many of us think of a neighborhood as that servicing a current school. So we have a, a neighborhood that is serviced by Lincoln Elementary. In your definition, if I'm understanding it correctly, that neighborhood today that we think of as one could potentially be five different.
That's a good, that's a very good estimate, and in fact, if you look at this map, you know, each of the colors on this map, this is the Janesville District, represents one elementary school attendance area. So we've actually created, you know, several, and as you can then kind of think forward a little bit and as to how, what the applications of this map might be, you can take those neighborhoods like puzzle pieces potentially and rearrange them as needed to adjust attendance area boundaries.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was tracking with you.
Oh, thank you.
I think that's an important distinction, because I don't recall us looking at it in that minute of an area, which, which I think is great, by the way.
And it's actually helpful for us in making projections, because we, we get a little bit more homogeneous kind of land use type and profile that way, and so we can project housing units by smaller area and with a little bit more precision, try to understand how many kids will be generated from that rather than big, you know, globs of the district, globs is not a technical term.
That makes sense in our district as well, because we have elementary schools that we would say, oh, this is the, it's the teen neighborhood. Parts of it are pretty dense population and parts of it are farm field.
Right.
So for you to break it into different sections for when you study it, that, that makes sense.
This, I don't expect you to read any of this, but just so, so you know, product that you have will have for each neighborhood, our projection, where you see all those numbers going across the screen for each year for housing units in this case, and a justification or rationale, how did we come up with that number? And that's all the text you see, so this is, you know, two neighborhoods out of, you picked the number again, 65, that we would do a deep dive in as part of this process. It's not all about housing unit growth. When we project 2040 housing unit growth, we'll probably find that, you know, 80, 90% of the housing units that are going to be there in 2040 are already there, are already here. So we need to understand what's going on, how existing demographic, demographics may change as we look forward to the future. So we'll look at changes in birth rate, migration in and out of neighborhoods, how many people we have and ages in each neighborhood that, you know, can have babies, and other demographic trends and changes that'll matter as we look forward, you know, to neighborhoods around us, you know, here today, and how many students they might generate 10 years from now. We will look at home, existing home sales, you know, every, every existing home sale has the potential to bring in a new family. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, it depends a lot on the characteristics of the home, the location and other factors. That'll be part of our analysis, and what this map shows is that we'll, we'll take all that, those factors and kind of mix them into a stew to analyze whether we think the number of students per housing unit in a particular neighborhood will be going up, going down, or staying about the same over our projection period, and this just happens to be the Wauwautosa District, and you can see it's fairly subtle and certain areas are growing, while the area across the tracks might be decreasing in enrollment depending on a bunch of different factors. So we'll, we'll take that analysis of future housing unit growth, that analysis of, of demographics to make a enrollment projection for each grade group in each of the neighborhoods within those years you see up on screen right now. And that just becomes a math exercise of multiplying housing units by our student-per-housing-unit ratio, you know, dialed in in particular at the elementary school level, but our first phase effort will include middle and high school projections as well. And then we'll be able to do a lot of different things, especially in the first phase, is just sum them up by those elementary school attendance areas to come up with a projection for each, each school. And we use a lot, variety of different techniques to present that, some people respond well to tables like Josh's, other people, you know, like them in different formats, we have that, and I'll show you a couple of examples here, but another indicator is that, you know, that there's a supercharged spreadsheet that we build, a model that we build for each district that, you know, arrives at a enrollment projection for that district, starting with housing units. And in the middle, you see a student-per-housing-unit ratio in this case for grades K through four for four neighborhoods, and I guess this is the Oregon School District. And then, and then doing some math to multiply those two together to come up with an enrollment projection for, for each of the neighborhoods, for each of our projection years. So as you can imagine, the table, if you get to 65 neighborhoods and, and four, five, four or five projection periods is pretty long and pretty wide. As I mentioned, we will map, you know, projected enrollment by neighborhood. This, again, I, this is the Condamawak School District where we did that, showing areas where we expect, and with the warmer colors, you know, more, more housing unit growth. I don't pretend to guess what the pattern is here, but this is a fairly typical pattern where the city of Condamawak's in the center, the most significant enrollment growth is sort of at the edges of the developing area of that, that particular city where you see most of the red on this map. And then we'll do a comparison of projected enrollment to the capacities of the schools, you know, in this case, this is from the Tosa School District. The elementary schools are all on the left that they currently have, and they're stable. They're exploring consolidation, and we're currently working with them to figure out what that means. And the information all the way on the right is the capacity range for the school with the lower number being that sort of ideal or optimal capacity, that 90% number like Josh shared with you, and the upper number being the max if every classroom was used all the time. And so for each school, we have, you know, in this case, we went up to 2035, a, a projection for that school, assuming no change. So chart means a presentation map, and then a more graphic representation that, that shows, you know, broadly speaking, the, the volume there or the, the rectangles you see are the capacity of the particular school, and then the lines you see are our projection with and without open enrollment. This is the Tosa District, we could do a very interesting discussion on open enrollment in the Milwaukee area. Suffice it to say, it's, it's significant for the suburban districts surrounding the Milwaukee Public School District. And so that's an important part, but, you know, I envisioned doing something like this for the Wausau District, and you'll be able to see graphically, you know, those schools, given no change, you know, which of them will be under capacity and how, how much. We'll package that at the end of Phase One, and for it's, you know, a lot of detail for people who want it, and a summary for people who don't. So that's, that's Phase One of our proposed process again. One, months one to four, pretty tight scope of services, this is something that we've done, you know, many times before.
So from Phase One, in theory, decisions could be made by the board, by administration, based on the information we received just from Phase One.
That's true, so I, I, in, in the proposal I put together and for you in the packet, I, I cast them as two, two phases. You could just say, Mark, you know, just give us Phase One, and we'll handle it from there. That is certainly, you know, within the realm of possibility, and we certainly.
I'm not suggesting we do or don't do Phase Two, I just want to make sure that, I, I think what I saw at the end of kind of your, your package would give us the ability, if we wanted to go just with Phase One, to make certain decisions.
That's correct.
The other question I have is, is it helpful if we have aligned on some goals going into this? Or is that more needed before a Phase Two would take place?
It's an early step of Phase Two, so I definitely will dive into that just momentarily.
All right, I'll shut up then, thank you.
But, but, you know, I would obviously encourage that regardless of whether you decide to do quote-unquote Phase Two, or you, you know, you know, work with me on that or not.
And that was one of the things that we had some very high-level discussion about with one of the previous initiatives is what are we trying to accomplish here? You know, is, is the goal, you know, the numbers that Josh showed were at 75% capacity in our elementaries. Is the goal to get that to 90, you know, is it 95? There's, you know, dozens of goals that we could come up with, but it just seems logical that we want to align on a core few and make sure that we're building towards whatever those are, financial enrollment, et cetera.
Absolutely, and that becomes then the basis for a defensible decision later when you have to make, you know, potentially hard choices. Is that, you know, this choice that we're making aligns best with the goals we established, you know, early on in the process.
Is that the part of the process, I'm sorry if I'm jumping into your second part of your presentation, but you just made me think of it. Is that the part of, of the process then in Phase Two where you also start talking about, or we're thinking about the buildings themselves, as in, you're showing us this information, but we know that this building needs $30 million of work, and this building needs $1 million of work?
Yes.
Okay.
So the decision on whether or not to, you know, consider a school for consolidation is a lot more than what, how full it is. It's how suitable it is to, you know, as a modern teaching environment, you know, which often relates to how old it is, but not always. And, you know, the amount of deferred maintenance that the school may or may not have, I'm not saying your schools do, I don't know. But those are among the factors that you would consider, how geographically close a particular school is to another school relative to the enrollment, you know, we expect within the general area is certainly something that you could consider and should. So there are definitely more than just, you know, the results of Phase One that would be important to, to look at as part of Phase Two. Why don't I hop right into that, because I think a lot of your questions, you know, relate to that is, and this is based on some of your, you know, fairly recent discussions, I think, and in, in late fall is, you know, should the elementary school footprint of the district be reduced, and if so, you know, how? Again, an outcome of Phase Two. You asked us a sub-question, or maybe it's a separate question, is should 4K and early childhood be offered in all the elementary schools? And that relates to how the partnerships with community schools, private schools in the district. And, you know, ultimately, you know, what type of facility option can gain, you know, community support? And enough support from the board. That's based on a thoughtful process that is inclusive and involves people. It's also based on performance of a particular option or options against goals and the ability to defend that, you know, particular option or choice. And I share all this and prepare all this knowing that, you know, this is not your first rodeo, and so it's part of my job to become informed and, you know, Keith has begun to help me with that, but as we would move through the early stages of this process, you know, continue to learn from the past. One of the suggestions, and this kind of reflects a little bit about, I know some things that you did in the past, is if you move on to Phase Two, one of the early steps and something that I would encourage you to get started on before Phase One is complete is to organize a task force of, of people. I've got a fairly, I don't know your, your history with task forces, but it's a fairly significant number, 25 to 40 people. Places I've worked with and seek nominations, folks that are in the community and interested. Depending on how many you, you get, there would be a process to select for geographic representation, making sure you have enough parents with kids in school and enough folks who don't have kids in school, all those kind of factors into the mix to make sure that your group is well-represented. And that's the group that will, you know, early in the process, learn together, begin to trust one another to the extent that they need, need that, evaluate different options, propose options, and ultimately come to some recommendation together. This gets to your comment, Mr. McKee, is what, what, where do you fit in as the board? And, and my recommendation would be the board would not necessarily be on the task force. I would encourage you to monitor the task force very, you know, and its activities very closely, but I, I would definitely encourage you to establish criteria for the task force, what are you asking it to do? So there would be a charge, that's not really up on screen, but these would be examples from other districts of criteria that they, you know, put forward to say, hey, if, if you're going to bring us options, let's bring options that maximize performance against, you know, these kind of things. And as you no doubt are thinking about right now, you're probably thinking, it's going to be hard to get a perfect option against some of these, because they seem to be, you know, some of them may be at loggerheads with one another. And that's part of then the challenge of, you know, doing this and, and then evaluating. For each of these criteria, we would propose to develop metrics, so it could be not just someone's judgment, but, you know, this option has, for instance, 15% of the elementary school students in the district would be affected versus this option where it has, you know, 27%. So you could begin to quantify some of those evaluation criteria. And then on the subject, you know, oftentimes in these processes, the task force will, almost always, you have questions. Oh, well, what about this? And that may cause or suggest some looping back to the board to get clarification on a criteria or, you know, a part of the charge, so that they're working with, you know, a, a good and a clear head in terms of what they're being asked to do. So that they're working with the, you know, a, a good and a clear head in terms of what they're being asked to do. Um, and then the task force meetings, you know, generally speaking, would progress according to what I have here labeled one through six. The first meetings, uh, can't overestimate the importance of getting to know one another, uh, where, where you're coming from. Uh, making sure that everyone's on the same page as to what the charge and criteria mean. Um, to help uh, us uh, uh, help them by providing, you know, what type of data they need to make decisions or evaluate, you know, evaluate tools. We might have some idea, you know, the conditions of schools, the suitability, obviously projections, but they might have other factors that they want us to look at. And bring to them going forward. So that's the first kind of meeting or two. Um, we would then spend a, a meeting to present the enrollment projections versus the capacity of the schools that would help kind of frame the extent of the issue. Um, and as part of that early meeting or early set of meetings, also look at those other factors that are important, like the conditions of the schools. Uh, the, you know, sometimes unquantifiable issues associated with, with the school facilities. Yeah, we got a lot of classrooms in this building, but you know, we've got four uh, lunch, you know, shifts, you know, or what it might happen to be a kind of a vague. Uh, unusual characteristic of that particular school. Um, and so those will all be kind of foundational information to help educate the, the task force. Uh, um, and with that information, we would then um, work with the district in a facilitated way to. Help them advise on broad directions that we should be looking at. Now, I don't even know what those are going to be yet because I haven't done the projections, we haven't studied the, you know, the issue at all. Uh, but it, it's sort of the first wave of, you know, what broadly can we do? And you know, getting a, not, not going to precise uh, solutions at that point in time, but broad potential options. Um, and then working through the course of the next few meetings to evaluate different options and to narrow down on what, you know, potential solution it might be. And uh, depending on the um, committee and the progress it makes, it might be a very specific solution that comes forward to you. It might be a couple of different options. Uh, you could do A, B, or C, and all of them have the general support of the committee or the task force. Uh, or something, some kind of hybrid of that, and we won't know that until we get into the process. So you'll see the scope of work I put together is uh, necessarily a little bit more vague um, at the end. But I do have a, a number, you know, these generally end up with eight uh, different options. I worked with one district and we got to option N as in Nancy. It was more than eight, if you can, you know, the alphabet, but uh, in generally speaking, hopefully we can, we can keep it uh, understandable. And then the idea would be that that task force would bring a recommendation or a couple of options to the board. And then you would have your uh, ability to, you know, certainly ask questions of task force members and us, uh, but also um, uh. To make a decision, hopefully based on those options that were brought forward. And like I said, this, this uh, process is phase two process, about nine months is realistic if, and that would require people working hard, meeting at least once a month. Uh, the task force to, to keep uh, on task and to keep momentum uh, going. Uh, we've got a variety of different techniques. I know I'm kind of pushing up against my time here, so I'll be relatively quick. Uh, we'll prepare a lot for each meeting. Uh, we're not going to come into a meeting cold, we'll work with your staff to prepare a detailed agenda, who does what, what information we need. Uh, prepare a slide deck for that particular meeting, so we're um, very well prepared. Um, most meetings will have opportunities for not only that twenty-five to forty member group to interact with us, kind of one big group to. Um, uh, you're the consultant staff team, but in break into small groups. Um, and to talk and to report out of those small groups, what they're learning. Uh, we'll help the group with various tools and metrics to evaluate and prioritize, prioritize different options. We'll try to work by consensus, but you know, use voting techniques. Uh, you've probably, you know, done them in a lot of post-it notes and other things involved, you know, in those processes. And use graphics wherever we can to help support um, uh, the decision-making process. And I've got just some examples of techniques we'll, we use. Um, this is a simple graphic on the lower left that just shows the district and how that particular district, this is the Oregon district. Would look if a particular option, we call them paths, uh, within that district were taken, you know, elementary, middle, or they have intermediate. Uh, middle and high schools within that district, so you know, simple graphics that show the district. Uh, and feeders, uh, you know, under a particular option. Uh, use maps a fair amount, this is a map from the Wawa Tosa district. So you can begin to see, I guess I should have had on the left, the current elementaries, uh, schools. But this is an option for that district that shows what would happen if um, that district went from nine elementary schools to seven. And how um, attendance areas might look under those, uh, that seven uh, s- uh, school option. And then with the next graphic showing uh, some performance against the criteria that that district put forward. Uh, for its task force, so the big bold uh, text you see on the page are the one, two, three, six different. Um, criteria that the, uh, the board asked the task force to use to evaluate different options. Um, whether or not our process gets as specific as suggesting new attendancy area boundaries. Uh, uh, there's pros and cons to that, uh, and we'll have to decide, you know, depending on how the process goes, how specific to get into that. You know, if we are talking about an option that consolidates from your current thirteen, you know, elementary schools plus Montessori to something fewer. Uh, you definitely want to know if it worked, that it works and how generally it would work and who would be affected. But uh, sometimes decisions on precisely where the boundary would be, uh, you know, between attendance areas are best left to a later stage of the process. So we'll have to, and that might be part of our criteria discussion, but we'll have to, you know, carve through that. Uh, and then, you know, my expectation is I, I would help the task force package its recommendation into a, a suggested facility plan or options and how that precisely looks. Um, you know, is yet to be determined, though I do have some models for that that we can lean back on. So that's a, um, that's the proposal at the present time. I'm very happy to, you know, chat more with you tonight or uh, you know, later as we work uh, forward. Thank you.
Questions?
I got one quick question, pa- uh, page twenty-one with the, that map.
Yeah.
Is that something that you would create in phase two or is that you, or would you have that in phase one because you'd have enough info?
No, we, we, um, that would be a phase two product because in this case in particular. This map is showing how that district might look in terms of attendance areas if, if it went from nine to seven elementary schools.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll have plenty of maps uh, in the first phase, uh, don't, but we're not going to. The, the idea with the first phase is it's, it's all information and, and data. Yeah, is it, is there my judgment in there as to whether this subdivision will pop or not? Absolutely. But we're not making any um, uh, suggestions as to what the district should do with that phase one data.
I'd be interested to hear from the rest of the board, we had talked about. At a certain level, um, late last year, addressing this building and potentially getting out of it. Not to muddy the waters on the elementary discussion too much, but is that something that? You would even consider, want to consider rolling into this as a, you know, an elementary, an existing elementary building could house part of this or? I mean, keep it completely separate and do it ourselves or what? Would just be interested in, in your thoughts.
I'm interested in getting out of this building, but hadn't thought of it as an elementary building. I don't know how I would feel about closing an elementary building and then still using it anyway for something, something else, you know?
No, I, I guess then I, I probably missed.
I mean, I, I don't mean using this as an elementary building, I mean, I don't know how I'd feel putting this into an elementary building.
And I, I probably did not clarify that, what I'm saying is that the, this building, if that were one of the objectives and said, okay, we are looking for options to get out of this building. Part of that solution may be in the elementary space, it may not be, it may be old. We think that it would be better to move it up to Horseman or to Wausa East or whatever. I, I'm not suggesting swapping one building out for the other, just the concept of getting out of this building, folding it into this process. Regardless of what that solution may be. And like I said, I, it, I can go either way on it, I just thought it would be something to consider.
I think all options should be on the table since we have a lot of information, we're going to get more and we're sort of starting over. I asked about this map specifically because I'd be interested to see how our district is laid out. With the information and then see where our buildings sit.
Mm-hmm.
Within these and to, to see how centralized or, you know, well utilized, we can.
Okay.
Do that. And, you know, an option would be to add on to the one that makes the most sense to move this to a different site, right?
Right.
We would save operationally, plowing and grass moving, things like that, right?
It, it could be part of it, it doesn't have to be. Um, so maybe we keep it in the back of our minds for right now and.
I, I don't see why that couldn't be added.
Okay.
Other questions?
And we've got other techniques to kind of show student population that are very interesting relative to schools and others, some other districts. We've actually plotted each elementary school student with it as a doc on a map relative to school locations. And I don't know how it would look for your district, but in some districts, it's very illuminating. Uh, you know, where you have, you know, significant concentrations of students relative to where your schools actually are. And in, in most districts, again, I'm not one pointing to presume, but most districts have too many schools too close to the center. Based on where current students are located and that kind of map, you know, often shows that. But there may be other reasons why, you know, those schools are important to keep open. Uh, so, but uh, oftentimes there's a misalignment between where the kids are and where the schools are.
It seems like a natural byproduct of building schools a hun-
That's right.
How it's laid out now, yeah.
There's a statement about the referendum that's ongoing and the dollars that are attributed to. All of the elementary schools, you know, it looks like this process is going to take the better part of a year, the work through. And, you know, I don't know that we've made a definitive decision to stop, you know, some of the projects at. Some of the schools that are obviously likely candidates for potential consolidation. So, you know, what do we, what do we do there? Do we need to make that, you know, determination or do we have time, you know, to work through this? So I don't know, I don't expect that answer right now, but.
Just a quick update, we did do an analysis of the, of the FFNE across the district and that budget and what, you know, is a, a desperate need. What is a need and what is maybe not a need, and we've got that delineated a little bit. Um, Josh and I were meeting with Nexus this week or next, I forget, uh, to, to analyze that. And we, I, I suspect we'll be bringing you a proposal around the referendum, uh, around the elementary portion soon.
Okay, and just because I think ma- many would agree that spending dollars and doing a project on a school and then to maybe, when this concludes and. We decide to consolidate, you know, and we've done work to a building that's wasted dollars and shouldn't be doing that.
That would certainly be a factor is uh, you know, recent investment in a school, um, among the several.
And speaking of, of referendum, um, some of the information that'll be useful for that phase two is money that we took out of a recent referendum planning. That we sort of have identified for our elementary buildings. This building needs air conditioning, this building needs a separate gym, this building has all this deferred maintenance, that'll be very useful information as well during that phase two part. It's, it's, it's money that we know we eventually are going to have to address.
Many times there's an alignment between deferred maintenance, uh, significant excess capacity. Uh, you know, location of the school relative to where the students are and will be, uh, that, you know, often works itself out in a process like this.
Uh, it's interesting that you have been doing this work and obviously aligns with what we're trying to accomplish. Would you say that you're seeing even more inquiries? I mean, it seems like every week we see new articles of many other districts around the state and around the country that are facing the exact same. Issues that we are declining enrollments and um, too many facilities, aging facilities and so.
Yes. It's a, it's a very common, you're not alone, if that makes you feel any better, uh, for what you're going through. Uh, I had a conversation with the Lacrosse Superintendent uh, three or four days ago.
Questions? Questions from board members? It is an action item, um, any questions on the? The action that we'd be looking at tonight then would be, uh, well, we could do it one of two ways. Um, personally, I support both phases. I really think not only to make use of your expertise for phase two, but also to have sort of that. Um, buffer so that, you know, it's, it's more of an independent person that's facilitating it. Because frankly, if we don't go with your help with phase two, we'll end up hiring a facilitator for, for phase two anyway. Rather than facilitating it with, with one of our own, I believe. That's what we did for our, our secondary and elementary um, committees last summer too, so. I, I would do both phases.
I think this is just really good information that, you know, the report that this would produce. Would help educate our community on what we're facing and what is trying to be accomplished. And this does not need to be divisive, it doesn't, you know, it just, these are, they're facts. And, and this information will hopefully help people come to the understanding that something needs to be done. So, yeah, I, I agree Lance, I think both phases uh, make a lot of sense and. You know, I'm curious and the task force and putting that together and how, you know, people's schedules and how that all works. But it sounds like you've been through quite a bit of that.
Well, and seeing the, the slide that Josh presented to start this all off, showing how far under the ninety percent capacity we are at school after school after school. Should start that conversation and it'll be interesting to see how that looks when we start projecting out five years, ten years to see if that changes.
If I may add something?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm thinking as I'm sitting here. This was a part of uh, Mr. McKee's uh, proposal back in November that we bring in an objective uh, person from the outside to take a look at everything. Because of the fact that there's so much emotion that goes along with uh, combining schools, consolidating, whatever you want to call it. And I think it would give us a lot of transparency to our community by having someone come in and just objectively not have anything to do with our district. But to give us the numbers and the data, and, and we had talked about the fact that we wanted to have objective data, so that's just my two cents, sorry.
Alright, and I still feel strongly about that, uh, Jim, I mean, depersonalizing this process as much as we can is important. And I also am, I, when I read your proposal, I was very, very glad to see your recommendation of board members not being on that committee. Um, because I think that when that happens, all of a sudden you have decision makers that are part of a development process. And then suddenly there begins, there gets a, uh, an attachment to a certain avenue or a certain route that may be tough to give up. Um, regardless of how much information is presented to the contrary, so I, I think that that neutrality is key.
Well stated, Pat, well stated.
Yeah, I think observing the meetings makes sense, but not voting in them and taking part. In the, whatever it's post this note, posted notes or however you're doing it, it, it's good just to observe, but not actually take.
Yeah, I, I would even discourage the observation, but that's me.
And, and we can talk about that and what, how you would want to be involved. The, the message I don't want to send is, or stay out of it, that's not what I want to send. I, I, you know, you need to be involved, you need to understand what's going on. Uh, we, uh, we obviously need your buy-in in the process. Um, uh, so i- if, if that means you, you know, coming and sitting in the fourth row at the uh, task force meetings, great. If, if, if you've, you know, you, you, I would like you to decide as a board how best um, the board should participate or not.
We're even streaming it, I know we're getting into weeds at this point, but.
Yeah.
just to watch in remotely would be great, but.
Do you have a a motion in your notes there to approve both phases or?
Uh, yes, so I will seek a motion to approve the hiring of M D Roffers Consulting LLC to complete the demographer study as presented and to facilitate the elementary task force. Any any other questions on it? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next, we have our annual AGR, annual, annual, a couple times there, report.
Good evening, board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our AGR annual report with you. On the first slide. Thank you, Cassie. Um, just a little overview of the program. So it's a program established to help improve student achievement. And as a district, we are committed to maintaining that eighteen to one in our six AGR schools. Um, instructional coaching for our staff, our teachers through our literacy coordinator, our math coordinator, tech integration specialist, EMLSS coordinator and multilingual coordinator. And we are also committed to each school will create those performance objectives in kindergarten through third grade in math and reading. And as a district, we have specifically identified I Ready as our assessment to use in the fall, winter and spring.
Great. When we talk about what we're um, attempting to accomplish, you know, as a team, we really have three main elements that we think about. One is building capacity around responding to data and changes in student need over time. Um, and those involve things um, around our continuous improvement planning process, data analysis. Um, and continuing to look at how we can build support for both our leadership team and our uh, teacher teams in supporting and being responsive to students. Um, the next element is really professional learning and coaching to support that effective pacing and small group differentiated instruction. We have several initiatives in the district, um, as you can see, that are all working to support. You know, how we can provide that great um, high leverage academic strategies and content to students on the ELA and the math side. We also have a lot of work going into how we're supporting students on the social emotional side um, to supplement and to have that tangency in between um, what we provide to students. Um, and then our last piece is really how we can continue to look at professional learning communities. You know, teachers collaboration time is so critical. Um, and allowing them that time to digest information, look at student outcomes um, to drive their instruction and that time to work on the work, just the planning and the the complexity of students today. Um, teachers need that time to work together with not only their grade level teams, but their um, some of our resource interventionists to uh, provide those supports for kids.
Looking at the data source, as mentioned earlier, we're using the I Ready diagnostic in K through eighth grade for that consistent data collection and that outcome analysis. The diagnostic gives us more in-depth or a deeper look into identifying those gaps and skills that our students are missing. And you will see on some of the data slides that we did previously use Fastbridge as our screener. So the data isn't all I Ready, um, some is Fastbridge, but this year we are fully implementing or have implemented the I Ready diagnostics for both reading and math in K five. This slide is an overview of the six AGR buildings. So you can see there's an upward trend for reading. The next slide is all six AGR buildings again for math, and there is also an upward trend over the past three years. We dig a little bit deeper into individual grade levels. So kindergarten, first grade, you can see the upward trend for reading. And as um, noted on the top, the fall twenty-one and spring twenty-three, that's our Fastbridge. Using that early reading English composite and then fall twenty-three going forward, we are using I Ready. Second grade, again, overall AGR schools is an upward trend for second grade. And then this slide is your third through fifth grade. Um, you have third grade and fifth grade with that upward trend. You see fourth grade is more of a downward trend. I just wanna note that we have to focus on that each of these groups of students are different. So there's different cohorts of students. So the fall twenty-two, twenty-three is different than the fall twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, looking at those students and digging a little bit deeper, those students currently, this this fourth grade year students during that disrupted learning, they were kindergartners in the spring of twenty-twenty. And then in that year where there's was disrupted learning, they were in that early literacy grade one. So there's lots of factors as to why we think um, fourth grade might be trending a little bit lower. You can dig deeper and look at where were they at any of your last year's third graders. They're up from that this year as fourth graders. Um, but no matter what, we are continuing to support our students through building a stronger universal instruction.
Uh, moving on to the math side, you see some similar trends. We have kindergarten, first and second grade math scores. And again, when we say uh, trending upward, we're talking about the students who are considered proficient direct benchmark and above. So just to clarify that. Um, so that that trend continues for K one and two. And as we move into third through fifth grade, um, we see some upward trend lines and those trend lines are generated by EduClimber in terms of, you know, where we're looking for those target outcome lines. Um, and again, we have had, one of the things that we see that, you know, are starting to see the great benefits from is um, we have that K eight really um, I Ready um, core resource for math. And when students start to s- to hear that same math vocabulary and start looking at elements of lessons and that progression over time um, with a core resource that um, can help us lay out that scope and sequence and that pacing of skills over time. Um, you know, we're really starting to see some of the benefits on the math side of, there are many factors, but that probably is a one that we can really point to in terms of um, continued progression for our students. Then on the following slides, you will see um, by grade level um, and by school, both the reading and the math um, scores. Again, these are um, the percentage of students who are at or above the benchmark um, that we are looking for, for the fall and the winter sessions. Um, and you can, yeah, you can go through those, Cassie. If anyone has any questions about any particular school, you can let us know. Um, but again. And this slide is all our elementary schools. So in reading, you can see the upward trend combining all our AGR schools and our non-AGR schools. Yep, and yeah, go, okay. And the same for math. So it's all our AGR schools and non-AGR schools. And there's an upward trend across the district in our elementary. And last but not least, our next steps. Um, we continue to support our adult learning um, through professional development. Um, as you may or may not have heard, Act Twenty is going to be something that requires us on the literacy side um, to provide some additional support for our teachers in K three on those foundational or phonics um, skills. And um, also our um, administrative team and um, leading and learning about great literacy instruction. And there are many other facets of Act Twenty that will come into play in terms of supporting our learners responsive to their screening and diagnostic scores, how we report that information out to parents. So we'll be doing a lot of progression supports for our uh, especially K three teachers. Um, but really all of our teachers through the universal piece that um, Dr. Caldwell talked about um, as well as our administrators and and looking forward. We continue to look at um, student goal setting through the Leader in Me platform. Um, that is a high leverage strategy. Um, research has shown when students are empowered to kind of own and be a part of their own learning and set their own goals and monitor those goals. Celebrate the progression in their goals that we see some increased student achievement and outcomes. Um, also on their social emotional side and their self-awareness side. Uh, we'll continue to work with our ELA standards work, really K twelve, looking at um, identifying those um, highly relevant uh, power standards, for lack of a better term, that have essential understandings that are enduring over time. That will help our students be college and career ready. And we also continue to look at our uh, you know, our core resources. We, part of the Act Twenty piece um, will probably involve some kind of um, curricular or core resource adoption for kindergarten through second grade um, to be aligned with the new standards and the requirements of Act Twenty. Uh, so we continue to look at all of our um, ELA resources, K twelve, and look at access points for students and accessibility and how we're responding and providing those um, entry level uh, points for students, um, depending on the content and the rigor. And last but not least, continue work with our math core resources and our intervention supports. Um, we've had a lot of support for a new uh, platform, philosophy, program, AVMR, which um, has a lot of science and research behind it. Uh, that provides additional tools and strategies for teachers to use with students in the elementary. Um, our staff have been met, many of our staff, almost all at K two have been trained and uh, we're finding some really great feedback from teachers on how helpful that is in working with their learners. So we will be continuing with that and of course, looking at enhancing our support for our multilingual learners, both in the newcomer center and through um, our coaching piece that we can provide to not only our um, multilingual teachers, but also our regular ed teachers um, with students who are in the, our schools and our classrooms already and not part of the newcomer center. So with that, that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess, first, I guess a statement, and I say this every time we go through this, it's it's frustrating, at least for me, because I don't know whether to celebrate and say you guys should have a party for all these great accomplishments or ask why is it only here? You know what I mean? Because there's no, there's no uh, relative comparison to make. Like is, is improving first grade reading at Lincoln from forty-two to fifty-five, is that statistically significant? That whatever is happening within that environment should be leveraged elsewhere? Or is it just a natural progression that some schools are gonna see more success and some are gonna see less?
Sure. That's a great question, Pat. And and I'm not sure if this might help answer your question or not, but there's a lot of ways we can look at I Ready reading in terms of that is a universal screener that all schools have access to. So we not only look at the percentage of students who are falling at benchmark and above, but we really dig in and our principals are really digging in with their staff. Um, there are certain things like we can look at the percent of students who should make typical growth, which would ears, you know, what you would expect to see of a student within a year's time um, with fidelity to instruction over that course of time. So we look at the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding their typical growth based on the norms that are established for us and where those aim lines would be where the student started. So that's another great level of success and celebration is when we see where a student started and how they're making gains on their typical growth for the year. We also are really digging in, a lot of our teachers have written their um, their SLOs, their um, teacher goals basically for their students that they do on a yearly basis as part of our um, teacher evaluation program. Where they are looking at stretch growth. So those kiddos who have extra gaps in their learning and are looking at legging skills. You know, stretch growth is making typical growth and then some for those kids. That's a stretch for them because they maybe are already starting behind what we would consider, you know, grade level expectation. So I would say what we really are celebrating is probably more so the look at typical and stretch growth and where kids are starting and how we're getting them than maybe, you know, always looking at just the percentage of students who are, that's important. The percentage of students who are proficient about, that's where we dig in at a district level and say what else can we be doing to support our teachers? What else can we be doing to raise the success of all children on a large scale? But I would say there are avenues and and a lot of great work being done digging in at where students are at and looking at their progression towards making those grade level gains that we're really hoping they all make. I don't know if that helps, but.
Yeah, it does. Um, and and do you see more impact in a one to eighteen or in a thirty to two environment?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, we only have one situation in the district um, where we have a thirty to two. And I wouldn't be able.
One room or one school?
One si- yes, one classroom situation. Yep. Almost all, all of the other classrooms in our AGR schools are the eighteen to one.
Got it.
This would prob- this would go way beyond the detail that we would be involved in, but I would hope that that you would take a look at like Pat gave one example, this school went up this much per- this percent. If it's just a one-off, you might ask that teacher, did you, did that team do something different this year? But if it's a trend, that school's second grade every year shows a better growth than the other gr- I hope you're then finding out what are they doing at that school and taking it to the other schools. That's not part of what we do, but I hope that's part of what you do.
Yeah, definitely. And our coordinators who are digging in with those teams and going through their professional learning community collaboration times and working through the data digs, that's a lot of what they're looking at is what's working, what's not. And how do we support pockets as well as all the staff and kids as a whole?
Pat brought up something he's brought up before. I'm gonna bring up something that I bring up pretty much every year. Um, so we saw that almost every metric had growth except for fourth grade was down for reading and flat for math. And you gave some possible reasons for that. And so I'll give up my uh, my possible reason that I give every year, which is AGR only protects K through three. And it ends in fourth grade. So this very same student population that is protected with a max class of eighteen goes to a max class of twenty-nine the next year. And I really think that we as a board need to look at changing that. And that would mean new positions, new teaching positions. And I think the next time we have a referendum discussion, I think we should talk about an operational referendum that would protect the class sizes at our high poverty schools. And maybe it's not eighteen. Maybe we transition it instead of going to a max of twenty-nine, maybe it's a max of twenty-two or something. And maybe it's not permanent. Maybe it's a a ten-year experiment to see, does this make a difference? And then we can come back ten years later and tell the community, we wanna do it again or we don't, cause it didn't work. And I really think that, I think it's an operational referendum that the community could get behind when you start talking about providing smaller class sizes for high poverty students. So it's my yearly pitch.
I I have one, one other quick question. So how comparable are the Fastbridge and the I Ready as far as a standardized evaluation tool? I mean, are they pretty comparable or I mean?
Great question. Uh, one is, the Fastbridge is a screener um, based on national norms. Um, I Ready is a diagnostic tool, which is really um, looking at skills and strategies um, of of, they also have national norms, but of typical of grade level expectations. So the diagnostic is a little, digs in a little bit more at what students, you know, know can should know and be able to do at that grade level where um, Fastbridge is a little bit, oh, oh, I don't wanna say nebulous, but a little more generalized in terms of national norms.
So it'd be kind of interesting then to track this out even longer. I mean, a couple of data points really to look at compared to what we have with Fastbridge. And if they're somewhat comparable, it's hard to equate that data, so.
They both have thresholds that will give you, you know, where proficiency and above would be. Which, which, you know, would be standard between the two of them, but they're really kind of measuring the same but different things. A diagnostic would give you a little bit more deeper analysis of legging skills, particular to a particular student versus just a leg in where they are based on national norms.
Thank you.
One other question, is there any way to correlate? And this wouldn't even have to be for AGR, to look at results across these I guess, grade subject schools. It doesn't even, yeah, it's an AGR or not, and compare that to um, uh, reported behavior incidents in a classroom?
Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, like could you see, you know, that, oh, this third grade, third grade classroom had twenty-seven behavior incidents last year and its increase was three percent. We have another room that had two and its increase was something much more significant.
Sure. I mean, definitely we, I think teachers and principals within their own buildings probably dig into some of that because when we do our data digs, when we go in and we work with grade level teachers, you know, every four to six weeks, we're looking at, you know, academic progress monitoring, attendance, behavior. So I think that probably happens a little more naturally at the building level. I don't know that we've dug in specifically to something like that, you know, from a district level. Um, other than looking at, at a school, what are the big minors and majors maybe reported within the school or what are the main? But I don't know that I've ever dug into the actual classroom outside of what a principal might as part of their data analysis in their building. So we certainly would have.
So it would be, it would be possible. Okay.
I think through EduClimber.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to old recurring business, um, this. Moving on to old recurring business, this is not an action item. Assistant Superintendent Josh Vigut presented to us a summary report. Of all legal counsel expenses incurred during the second quarter of twenty twenty three, twenty four at our last meeting. That report is broken down by law firm and by type of legal advice sought, it's a written report that requires no action. Any questions from board members that we didn't already ask last month? Okay, so we'll move on then to new business. This is a recommendation for the twenty twenty four capital projects. At the January Education Operations Committee meeting, Ryan Urmansky, Director of Building and Grounds reviewed notable projects recently completed as well as. The effect of alternate funding sources to provide context for the upcoming planned capital improvements. I'm seeking a motion to approve of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five capital projects and the corresponding budget.
So moved.
Second.
We have first and a second, this again came from the full board committee meeting, are there any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is another action item at the Education Operations Committee meeting, Diana White presented the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five district calendar. I'm seeking a motion to approve of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five district calendar as presented. First and a second, we have any additional questions or comments since last meeting?
Changes fixed?
Yes.
Hook up last time.
Yeah, if you look at the previous two versions, there was some. The color coding changes on those two days at the end of the quarter and then the the graduation dates were also added, I think those are the two.
January seventeenth and March twenty first.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, at the Education Operations Committee meeting, Josh Vigut shared many of the key variables contributing to the district's multi-year financial projection model. That will be ongoing as we move throughout the year in our budget process, it's not an action item tonight. The next item is an action item at the January Education Operations Committee meeting, Elizabeth Channel. Shared information about a potential expansion grant that Montessori would like to apply for. This time I seek a motion to approve the Montessori charter school to apply for the federal charter school grant through Wisconsin D P I. That would provide funding for the previously approved school board expansion of grades four K through eighth grade. First and a second, we have any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That then brings us to our open forum, do any board members have professional growth and development to share for the month? I do have one item, I've been going through the W A S B seminar series, online series, I did learn something, so this is something for Jim or whoever else. Wants to run for president and for Cassie. I did note that they had advised advised us for our upcoming annual reorganization meeting. That when it comes to the appointments for the CISA and W A S B delegates where we're actually. Putting someone forward as a representative of the board, that we do that as a board vote as opposed to a president. Appointment. Because it is someone who's speaking, it's not the same as attending as a committee member where you're kind of giving feedback to the board, you're literally representing the board and it should be a board vote in the script, so. I'll leave that to Jim and Cassie to take a look at, but that was was their advice.
And chances are Lance, we will be talking about that this weekend at the director's meeting. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sellers, do you have a legislative update for us?
I just will. Let you know what we talked about at our latest CISA nine border control. We had a continuous presentation about continuous school improvement group through CISA nine that Erin Tracks. Directs now with her team, talking about the things that that team provides and. Offering stay survey surveys to gauge teacher happiness through districts is is one of their tasks. And then after that presentation as as a board, then we. We went through some of the things in the Act twenty bill and Senate Bill nine ninety and how motion fifty seven, which is a smaller version of Act twenty. This kind of talked about all those details as a group and how it might affect each of the districts.
Thank you for that update and superintendent commentary?
Thing to add at this time, thank you.
And presiding officer commentary, I'd ask that the district or the board member liaison district activity report be added to the record. And also President Boucher wanted me to provide an update on the superintendent's search, so I've got that here. Last week, Dr. Fran Finco of the W A S B met with representatives from the following groups, administration, teachers, support staff, board members and students. Each each of these groups met and had small group discussions related to the qualities and characteristics that they would like to see in the new superintendent. The board is reviewing the results of the focus groups and on Thursday, the board will meet to discuss themes from the focus group responses. The themes found will drive the questions that are asked in the application and interview process. The application is scheduled to be posted on February twenty second with a deadline of March fifteenth. Concludes the presiding officer commentary. Next, I am seeking a motion for a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five sub one sub F. To discuss and consider the investigation of employee matters, which if discussed in open session would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of the individuals involved. And which involves confidential student information protected by with stat section one eighteen point one two five. I'm seeking a motion and a second on that and then we'll do a roll call. Yeah, we have a first and a second.
All right, John Creacher? Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai? Jennifer Paoli? Cory Sellers?
Yes.
Nancy Trowa?
Yes.
And Jim, I'm afraid you can't vote on this one.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we're going to close. Sure, we'll stay here, just give it a minute.